Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the Economic Development and Authority meeting to order. Kim, can you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Dumalag?
Here.
Commissioner Bowden?
Here.
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
President Budd?
Here. All right, we have a very brief agenda tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
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 All right, the motion carries. We have just one set of minutes from our August 4th EDA meeting. I hadn't heard of any changes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or changes? All right, all those in favor of approving the August 4th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is our consent agenda. Do I have them with EDA disbursements on it? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one. It feels like without Commissioner Broussard here, someone needs to say, it looks like $33,000 worth of well spent. There you go. I knew there was something there.
Yes, we do need that comment. Thank you very much, Commissioner Dumalag. All right, with no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have no public hearings for EDA tonight, no regular business, no communications or announcements, so the EDA meeting is now adjourned, and we will begin our city council meeting at 6:15.
Being 6:15, it is time to begin our city council meeting. If you haven't figured it out already, I am not Mayor Muhammad. But Mayor Muhammad is on vacation, traveling a little bit, so I'm filling in today as Mayor Pro Tem and want to just officially call this meeting to order. And before we do anything else, I wanted to take just a minute to say a couple things. By now, of course, everybody has heard about the horrific, tragic, deadly shooting at Annunciation School and Church last Wednesday. This has completely gripped our city, our towns, the whole metro area, and even the nation. I also want to just note that growing up, three houses down from where I grew up was my friend Jake, who went to Annunciation High School, Annunciation School and Church. His family was very, very active there, his parents still are. And so this really hit me. I've been in that sanctuary, I can't even count how many times I was kind of an ad hoc part of their youth group for many years with my friend Jake. So this one really hit, really hit me hard, to the point where I haven't been able to bring myself to go down and see the site yet, which I'm going to do. And I know that many, many people have connections in some way, shape, or form to Annunciation School and Church. And so we thought with what happened there and the 23 people who were injured, they just added a couple more, because there were some that found out they were injured later, and 18 of those being children, and two of them lost their lives that I feel it's important to name. And then we're going to take a moment of silence, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Those two beloved young ones that were lost were Fletcher Merkel, who was eight years old, and Harper Moiski, who was 10 years old. So let's just take a moment to reflect, to give thanks for their lives and what they gave to this world, and to hope for a better world. Thank you all. Sometimes feels awkward to move from that to the business, but we do that so that we can get to the business, because it's always sitting there in the back of our minds, and so we let it come to the forefront for a moment, so that we can do the business. I would invite us... Oh, whoops. Roll call. It's my first time. Thought I was doing great. Should have done that first.
I'd be happy to do a roll call, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ferris?
Here.
Councilmember Broussard?
Present.
Councilmember Budd?
Here.
Councilwoman Dumalag?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Bowden?
Here. Okay. Little reverse order, apologize for that. But now I would invite anybody who would like to, to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into its broad border, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay. Moving on, the first thing we got to do in order to operate is approve an agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? For what it's worth, I think it looks great. So with that, why don't we take a vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That passes. All right, we can do stuff now. Let's see, making sure I do this right now. We've got presentations. The first one is a proclamation for Welcoming Week, and I have asked Councilmember Dumalag if she would like to read that, and she has agreed, so I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you for having me read this proclamation for Welcoming Week 2025. Just a real quick note, this is an organization that is nonprofit, nonpartisan, and the whole goal is to welcome immigrants into communities. And, you know, I think about my own family. I'm a child of immigrants, and I'm married to an immigrant, and wow, what a great thing that we have in this community. Because so often when we move to different lands, we're trying to get to know people, trying to get to know customs, even the language. It's really great that we have this organization here and that we're partnering here and having that proclamation. So I'll read it right now. Whereas, Welcoming America is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that works to encourage and support communities to be more inclusive and welcoming towards immigrants. And whereas, each year in September, Welcoming America supports and encourages local communities to host a series of events collectively known as Welcoming Week. And whereas, these Welcoming Week events, organizations, and communities bring together neighbors of all backgrounds to build strong connections across communities and affirm the importance of welcoming inclusive spaces in achieving collective prosperity. And whereas, St. Louis Park has been historically welcoming for a place for Jewish, Russian immigrants, refugees, and many new neighbors from all over Minnesota, the U.S. and the world. It is home to a diverse community where over 11% of residents speak a language other than English. And whereas, anti-immigrant policy and sentiment is on the rise across the country, calling us to deepen our commitment to being leaders in racial equity and inclusion for all our community members, regardless of immigration status. And whereas, by fostering a welcoming environment for all, regardless of immigration status, race, ethnicity, place of origin, English language proficiency, religion, income, gender, sexual orientation, differing abilities, age, or other factors, we enhance St. Louis Park's health, economic prosperity, and the well-being for current and future generations. And whereas, this resolution is joined by other Minnesota cities as we stand together to maintain a welcoming state for all neighbors, for where all neighbors are welcomed. This resolution fosters a sense of belonging and the desire for all those who live here to have an opportunity to contribute. Now, therefore, let it be known that the mayor and the city council of the city of St. Louis Park hereby observe Welcoming Week on September 12th to September 21st, 2025, in our community.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Dumalag. Very well read. Is there... Would anybody like to speak on this? Anybody have any thoughts? All right. Oh, Tim, sorry, Carl, it's Councilmember Broussard.
I'm very happy to support issuing this proclamation. We need to be more and more welcoming to those who come to our community regardless of who they are. And the fact that at a federal level, we've now undertaken this campaign of hatred and exclusion is very sad indeed, I think, for us as citizens. So I'm really happy that we're adopting this type of resolution and declaring to the world again that St. Louis Park is a welcoming community and all are welcome here.
Very well said. Anybody else? Councilmember Budd?
And I'll just kind of echo what's been said. I just think in this moment, it's needed now more than ever, and I think it's great that there's this Welcome Week, but I also believe that embracing a welcoming city is one that is high on our priorities and glad to support that.
Okay. We are indeed a welcoming community, and so we will continue to be that and grow into that and adapt and adjust to whatever that may mean. Next on the agenda is, we have a couple of donations we'd like to recognize. They'll be part of our consent agenda when we vote about them later, and I just wanted to name those. We always appreciate those who contribute to our community. These are made to the... I think all three of these are made to the Parks and Rec Department, is that correct? We have Aaron Loughholm, who has donated a memorial bench installed at Bass Lake in honoring Mike Loughholm. We have a donation by Jerry Rubens, another memorial bench to be installed at Fern Hill Park honoring Amy Quinn Rubens. And Gretchen C.Y. Shattuck has donated money for a memorial bench and tree to be installed at Oak Hill Park honoring Nick L. Young. I'm assuming all three of those are people that they have lost that they want to remember, and so may we remember them too, even though we may not know who they are, that were a part of our community. And therefore, we want to make sure we remember them and name these donations. Is there anything else I need to say about that? Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to be thorough. All right, next on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes from August 18th, and so I'll be looking for a motion to approve those.
Move approval.
I'll second that. All right, we have a first and a second. Are there any questions or amendments to the minutes? There being none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from August 18th, 2025?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next on our agenda is the consent items. I have not heard if anybody wanted to pull anything off, so I will be looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Move approval with comments.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to... I wanted to make a comment on item 5C, the approved boards and commission appointments, and really thank staff and the volunteers in our community that said yes, we'll be serving. We had a lot of iterative process with the boards and commissions. This is something that is always going to evolve. We had, at the time, Councilmember Larry Kraft wanted to have additional youth voices on boards and commissions, so asked for another seat in some of those. And then we had a really robust process on how do we reimagine our boards and commissions, and how do we get more engagement? So I know that was a long, several months process there. I'm also really excited about the youth commissioners that are going to be joining us as well. In particular, I'm excited to see, and I'll just call out one, not one specific commissioner, but when I was on planning before being on city council, I've been on planning for a number of years, and I only remember one commissioner that was a youth member. And so I'm really excited to see that we now have a youth commissioner on our planning. So just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make comments on those. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on the consent? Councilmember Broussard?
Yes, first, I've got a comment on item number 5F, which is approval of Minnesota Department of Transportation permanent drainage easement for Trunk Highway 169. It's over in Ward 4 and Cedar Lake Road. Drainage easements aren't very exciting, so I won't spend much time talking about the actual easement, but the fact of the matter is, is that Minnesota Department of Transportation is going to spend, I believe, over $3 million to reconfigure the bridge in the intersection in the next year and a half or so. So they'll be engaged in a planning process sometime this winter, and then construction is due to commence next summer. And for the residents of Ward 4, the construction season on Cedar Lake Road continues for another year or so, but at some point, it's all going to be done. And I appreciate the fact that our residents and other drivers driving through will be patient with the process, because it's all for the best in the long run. So thank you very much to the citizens. A second comment I'd like to make is, there's item number 5G, we're going to approve a temporary seasonal premises amendment for the Yard House down in West End, and people can note that the Yard House will be expanding their outdoor serving area as part of this approval. So feel free to come over to Ward 4 and West End to enjoy expanded outdoor services while we can.
Emphasis on the while we can. Anybody else have any comments on our consent items? I did just want to also throw out a shout out to all those youth. If I counted correctly, over half of them on this list are youth in our community. So we are blessed with an incredibly strong crop, if I could say it that way, of youth in our community who are engaged and want to lead. Also, just a big shout out to Pat Coleman, who puts all that together. It's a massive puzzle, y'all. I don't know if y'all know, but it is a really big puzzle, and he does a great job of organizing it and getting it put together. So thank you, Pat, for that work. All right, so we need to have a vote. Yeah, all in favor of approving our consent items? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That is passed. Okay, so now, next on our agenda, we're moving to our public hearing and such on the... What is the exact title? Help me out here, Kim.
The first reading of the fee ordinance.
Yes, thank you. The first reading of the fee ordinance. And so the first step in that is, I do believe we need a motion, correct?
No.
Or do we hear first?
We're going to hear first from...
Kim and I went over this this afternoon, believe it or not.
All good. I would note that this is a public hearing tonight, so if there's people who know they want to testify, they have the opportunity to do blue cards. They're right in the back of the room. We already have one up here.
Yes.
I'm just killing time while Amelia gets settled.
Thank you.
There we go. I figured it out. Okay. All right, I'm Amelia Grover. I'm the Finance Director. I'm going to open up the public hearing for our 2026 fee adoption. So today, the recommended action for council is to approve the first reading of our ordinance adopting fees for 2026 and set the second reading for September 15th, 2025. The policy consideration is, does council support the proposed fees for 2026? So fee adoption, this is something that we do every year. It's an important part of our ordinances. It's also a key part of the budget process. In the spring, departments are analyzing their fee levels. They're taking a look at the cost of doing business, how much they're charging for fees, they're understanding if the service they're providing is something where we want to fully cover the cost through the fee, or if it's something we want to do a cost share, because there's shared benefit. And so in those instances, we're subsidizing the cost of the service with the property tax levy. So departments are reviewing those fees, they're making adjustments, and then they are baking those into our assumptions for the 2026 budget. And so in June, when we first started talking about the budget for 2026, we're discussing baseline expenditures, but also changes in non-property taxes. And the biggest part of non-property tax revenues, the biggest part of our revenues that aren't property taxes are fee revenue. And so those are baked into the budget that we've been discussing for the last several months. In August, the specific dollar amounts for each individual fee are entered into what we call Appendix A, which is our fee schedule, and a public hearing is noticed. Today, September 2nd, we're having the first reading of the fees. September 15th will be the second reading, and then January 1st, 2026, is when these fees will be in action. So there is a very long list of fees. All that is available online in Appendix A. Today, I'll talk in general about fees that were eliminated or fees that were added to that list. In general, all the remaining fees were increased by either an inflationary amount or they remained flat. There are a few exceptions to that, but in general, most of our fees try to move with inflation, so that the amount that is subsidized by the property tax levy stays the same as inflation and costs grow. Fees that were eliminated, at a high level, we have tried to streamline things where we can. So when there are multiple fees that were just slightly different, we try to collapse that into one, so that makes sense. We've reviewed state statutes for changes that impact our fees and just made sure that it's reflective of the current services provided by the city. So eliminated fees in 2026, there used to be a separate rate for our housing rental license fee for housing that was owned by the housing authority. It's a lot of housing. We have eliminated that separate fee, so now all rental properties pay the same fee. All THC-related licenses will now be done through the state in 2026 and beyond, so those fees are eliminated. For rentals, for outdoor use, for things like tables and chairs and mobile stages, those will no longer be offered separate from room and space rental. They'll still be a part of room and space rentals, so those separate fees are eliminated this year. Woodchip delivery service is no longer a service that's provided, and then the ordinance was repealed that had previously required crime-free multi-housing training, so that fee is also eliminated. New fees in 2026, again, many of these are coming off of previous council discussions or zoning discussions, so there is now an application fee for a tree protection permit meant to help us preserve as many trees as possible. There's a variance zoning letter fee that's associated with producing verification letters when that's needed. And then there are a few other ones, a few other new fees related very specifically to outdoor seating and patio rental. So the last chunk of fees that I want to talk about are utility rates. Those are also approved along with our fee schedule. Utility rates are set and collected from all utility users, so for water, sewer, and storm water. Those are collected to keep those systems running and running well. So that includes operating costs, but also includes capital costs. And as we'll talk about later in the evening in our study session, we have finished the proposed capital improvement plan over the next five years, incorporating a risk assessment for water main, for all of our water systems, that staff has been working on for over a year, to make sure that we are replacing water main at a pace that keeps us ahead of the curve of water main who are coming to the end of their useful life. So that means we're stepping on the gas a little bit for our water main replacement. And so to sort of show that, this graph shows the cumulative spending in each fund, in each utility fund, for capital projects over the next five years. And so you'll see, we have quite a few investments that we're planning on making. These are really targeted investments designed by that risk analysis, and we want to make sure that we are funding and financing that hard work. So the utility rates are set to make sure that that plan and our regular operating expenses can be implemented. So utility fees, I think the good news is, we've been able to keep fees at very similar rates, if not slightly lower, to what they've been in the past. So this table is showing historical rates for water, sanitary sewer, storm, and solid waste. In 2025, there was a 4.5% increase in both water and storm sewer and a 5.5% increase in sanitary sewer. Solid waste is slightly different. That is a service that we provide through contracting, and so those rates are basically set three years at a time when we sign contracts. So that will remain at 5.75 each year in a bit increase. All of the utility, all of the other utility funds outside of solid waste will see a 4.5% increase next year. And that is what we project to see for the next several years, to make sure that we are pulling in enough revenue to maintain those systems. Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. There being none, we'll move on to the public hearing. I have one blue card. If anybody else would like to speak, you could fill out a blue card and get that turned into a staff person, they'll get it to us, but also, even if you don't feel like a... Even if you don't fill out a blue card, you're welcome to come to the mic and speak when it's open, while the hearing is open. So because I do have at least one person that would like to speak, I'd like to go over some just kind of protocols that we have for public hearings. So we will be voting on this item tonight, and so if you're going to come to testify, we ask that you please state your name and your address for the record. If you don't, I'm going to probably interrupt you and ask for it, but that's okay. You will then have three minutes to make your comments. If you look behind me right up here, there, that little thing, right? There's this little screen, it'll be green, and while you're speaking, when it's... When there's one minute left, it will turn to yellow, and in your final 30 seconds, it will start to flash red. If it starts to flash red, we ask that you just please wrap up kind of your final sentence and thoughts. And that is a good indication of making sure that you... That we just kind of keep things right and fair. When it is solid red, your three minutes are up. That's actually when you need to finish your last thought, sorry. But once we get to three minutes, we need to move on to just be respectful to others and the agenda that we have before us. Your comments should be about this item that staff just presented on and no other items on the agenda. And so with that, I will open the public hearing, and we'll do so with the blue card that I have. So I would like to invite Jeff Markham to come forward. Did I say your name right? And if I didn't, please correct me when you get to the mic.
Jeff Markham.
Okay.
Jeff Markham, yeah.
And your address?
Jeff Markham, 4100 Raleigh Avenue, Ward 2. So I did realize, just a heads up, I wrote this sort of all-encompassing regarding levies and fees, so my apologies if this gets off a little bit. Basically, we've... My family's lived in Ward 2 since 2014. We bought our home then. I own and manage five buildings in the city, apartment buildings consisting of 46 units. So first of all, my family loves the city, loves the parks, loves everything. What I'm here to address is basically the increase in fees and levies, and I'm using interchangeable, I suppose, here, for the upcoming year. Not here to demand elimination, reduction of taxes by some crazy number. They're there for a reason. They need to be. I believe the city, while not perfect, is successful, and it is because of the services and infrastructure that it provides to this community. The purpose of me speaking to you is to encourage the council and city staff to take a big step outside the box and get creative to ease the financial burden on residents. My home has had an... Excuse me, has had an average property tax increase of 6.3% since 2001. I know there's a proposed levy of close to eight. Basically, that equals about $550, $590 on our home now. To put that into real-life numbers, that's about two and a half months of Trader Joe's groceries for our family. And one of my apartment buildings, just to use as an example, we've had 5% annual increases. That basically equals $17 per month rent increase just to cover those expenses alone. I try to keep those annual expenses around 2%. Obviously, if over half is going specifically just to one item, we need to increase. Property taxes increases, and also the fees, don't just affect homeowners and renters, but also the many diverse businesses in our city. A lot of businesses, including lots of small net... Or small businesses, triple-net leases where they are charged back property taxes, local expenses, insurance, all those items. They can have a large effect on those businesses as well. Can the local shops and bakeries and the strip malls afford those? I want you to think of them as increase... Those increases in terms of employee hours and wages. Sorry, I definitely overwrote some of these. Basically, in... I looked through the 37-page report that was going to be also part of the study session, and my biggest item here is that it... The city needs to be well-funded, ample reserves, proper infrastructure. However, it's important that that burden does not solely rely on the residents and business owners. In that 37-page report, I saw one reference to an expense reduction, which was about 0.18% of the proposed 2006 budget. As residents, we understand we bear the brunt of the responsibility to help the city maintain solid general fund and reserve fund, but it can't solely rely on us. And I just encourage the city to do their part, look at reducing expenses. Sorry.
You're fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
No, no, thank you very much. You can have a seat. Yeah. No, no. Thank you very much. You can have a seat. Yeah. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and then look to my council colleagues to see if we have any motions or comments.
I'd move approval of the proposed fee ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments, discussion?
Yes, certainly. This is hard every year to go through the fees and make sure they're commensurate with the services that are provided by the city and also that they're adequate to fund the substantial costs that we have in running this city. Much like taking care of an aging building, we have aging infrastructure and major expenses here that we have to be able to adequately fund. And through analysis every year of our fee structure and also of our tax burden, we do exactly that. So I think this fee schedule fairly reflects the cost of providing the services we do and provide some of the income necessary that we have to have in order to address our infrastructure. So I'll be supporting.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Councilmember Dugelock?
Thank you. And, you know, thanks to staff for putting this. It's every, we take a look at this every so often and appreciate Jeff Markham's comments on, on the fees as well. You know, some of the eliminations make sense. The THC, which people are like, oh, we had a fee for that? Because we, as a city, before the state allowed it, we said, let's not put a moratorium, let's take a look at actually allowing it and then put some guidelines so people could enforce guidelines that we were putting forward. So that makes sense to repeal some of that. You know, and generally speaking, fees and, this is not an opportunity for the city to like make a killing on revenue. Usually, it is, we're covering the cost of how we deliver those goods and services. One thing that I also wanted to point out is, you know, the solid waste. We had a lot of discussion about solid waste. Wow, solid waste. And if I remember correctly, and I don't know if Kayla's here, but I do remember the RFP came out. We, we were trying to get a contractor to do all, you know, those things bundled. Only two people responded, and then we like separated the contract. So, and at the time, we were like, well, it is what it is. You know, these are contractors that are responding to us. And instead of having a big, huge jump in one year, we wanted to kind of do an even smooth so that people wouldn't go, oh, my gosh, this is how much we're charging people now. And it was meant to smooth out some of those bumps. So that, that's my recollection of that as well. The thing that really is interesting to me is the zoning letter due to insurers and lenders. That, that seems like it's a new one for me. That's kind of interesting. And you're shaking your head, Amelia. And, you know, this is, this kind of speaks to how investors think of risk and so forth. So just something for us to track as a city, because I would say businesses, commercial properties pay a disproportionate share of property tax to us, homeowners. It's not a one-for-one. So just wanted to make sure folks knew that. But as we think about our levy, and one of those things that we also include for, for our, in our packet as we're making decisions, is how it will impact those that are living in our multifamily housing. And our families that live in apartments, how would that, how would the decisions we make impact them? I'd also, perhaps if we can include this, and maybe we have in the past, how would it impact kind of some small business as well? Because I know we do look at it from a property tax, from a commercial, but, you know, not everyone offices at West End. So not, sorry, Ward 4. And those are fancy property taxes. So, so those would be kind of some of the things that I would ask staff to provide as we're making decisions on our levy.
All right.
But I'm supportive. I shouldn't have said that. I'm supportive of the fees.
Thank you, council member. Anybody else? Councilmember Bud?
Well, I will say that I too am supportive of the fees. I really appreciate Mr. Markham's comments tonight because he speaks as someone that experiences this more than just one property, right? I mean, you have so many units in the city and therefore you, you reflect the voices of many people when you talk about the impact. So I think that the scrutiny that I have over my time on council been put on, on fees is, is merited because it, it ties the cost of service so closely to the, the reason for that cost as opposed to spreading it over the broader property tax. So I, I think that we share the goal of making sure property taxes are staying, are staying as reasonable as they can be. And one of the ways I think that we can do that is through close scrutiny on the fees. So I appreciate staff's efforts in doing this. I asked several questions around this this afternoon and got some clear answers. Some increases are due to state statute changes. Some increases are due to labor and, and materials increases, but, but they are pretty well scrutinized. So I appreciate that.
Anything everyone said. Thank you, staff, because the work was amazing. You know,
St. Louis Park is a marvelous place to live, and we just have to keep doing what we have to do to keep it that way, you know? So sometimes the fees are going to get up. But what you put out is what you get in. You know what I'm saying? So I am definitely in support.
All right. I did want to name also that council member Rog, who represents Ward 1. Couldn't be here tonight because she is also traveling, not with the mayor, but, and she had some, some thoughts that she would like to have into the record. So I'd like to kind of go over those on her behalf. First of all, she wants to, to thank everybody for attending the meeting and being here for this. I want to make sure I capture this right. Her, her comments are specific to the use of picnic tables and community building events in neighborhood parks and such. And part of what you might have noticed in here is that she says that there isn't a fee increase on the picnic tables. There's actually a removal of the fees because there is a removal of the service of providing picnic tables to our neighborhood groups or therefore anybody else. And because this is a little bit nuanced, I want to make sure I read this part word for word because I want to make sure I represent her correctly. She says, "The rationale provided for eliminating this service is that neighborhood organizations may not meet criteria shared by the city attorney for receiving a reduced or waived fee. Therefore, the service should be eliminated as no group may legally qualify. Since the city attorney's role is to advise council and council has not had the opportunity to discuss the city attorney's advice and make our own determination, I feel the decision to eliminate this valued resource for neighborhoods is premature." And she's not speaking specifically to whether she would vote yah up or down on this because I think there's just this one little specific piece. But what she's asking for is that when she returns, she intends to ask for a time on the calendar for us to discuss this issue and study it more deeply so that in, when we're looking here at this removal of this service, that we maybe have a broader discussion around the legalities of it and the practicalities of it rather than just letting it, letting it go. And so I think that's the essence of what she was getting at on this item. And so I just wanted to make sure I spoke that into the record on behalf of councilmember Rog. As for me, I'm in favor of this, this piece, the fee piece. It's very difficult, as we've already said. But I will say that I, I also, if councilmember Rog were to have spoken this here at the dais in present, in our presence, I would agree with her that I would like to have a broader discussion around this too. So I will just state that for the record as well. I think that's everybody. Yes?
Can I ask a question based on what you just shared?
Yes, you may.
Is there a way that we can take that single item out of this proposed reading?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on this one.
Yes, there's been two things. One, I'd like to answer that question, then comment on the, the councilmember Rog's comments. So yes, you, what's before you is staff's recommendation. So if you would like to remove a fee for other consideration, you can do that. I think you can also, if you want to, to keep things moving, adopt it as it is. The idea behind a second reading is you can, you can take a, another look at it. You can't expand it too much, but within the idea of, hey, we've passed it in this format. Can we nuance it a little bit? I think you can. Or you can just remove that for other consideration. So yes, you could, if there's a motion to approve it as is, removing that one-line item, I think you can do that. The, the idea, one of the things that I could move on to, some of the comments about what city attorney said, didn't say on this, is when the original question or emails I was fielding from councilmember Rog, and it's good for the group as a whole, I think, to hear this, so you can digest it, is there's never been an opinion that you can't waive the fee for picnic tables for community groups. One of the tenets of government, though, is everyone's treated the same. And so as you decide winners and losers, who gets it, who doesn't, waive it for one group, waive it for the other, it shouldn't just be, I like them, they've approached me, this is who I'd like to give that break to. There should be some rationale behind it. And so through the constitution, which, which addresses public purpose, which I know we spent a lot of time on, through some opinions handed down by the state, there's sort of this, three basic ideas that I've been able to put together as you look at it. And one of them is keeping in mind that you're starting with, you're distinguishing them from other groups. You're saying, when you come to us and want a picnic table, we won't charge you. But this other group that comes through the door, we are going to charge you. And I think you can't just say, well, but they're a neighborhood group. You have to be able to distinguish the why. And so one of the things we've talked about is the distinctions between different groups of individuals. Needs to have a rational basis and serve a legitimate government interest. And so when you look at that and you create a category, needs to be for a legitimate government interest. And so one of the things is, well, they've approached us, they have a strong voice, you are already giving money to these groups. What is the rationale by waiving fees and giving them more and perhaps not to others? And so that is part of the discussion or emails that I have had with councilmember Rog. And I've just asked that, go through that exercise so that we as staff, when we're asked, well, why do they get it and we don't, we can, we can explain that. And then I think some of the things you'd consider speak for themselves. So one of the other items I had mentioned to councilmember Rog was distinction between groups cannot be based on suspect criteria. And I think that one hopefully speaks for itself. And finally, the system should have objective criteria with little discretion to determine who satisfies the criteria and who doesn't. We don't want to create such a vague criteria that staff has put in this situation where they are left picking it. So it should really, with specificity, identify it. And candidly, that, that is not always an easy exercise because there is sort of some people we gravitate towards, this seems like a good cause. But when we grant it to them for that good cause, there may be other entities that also qualify for it. So the exercise I've encouraged is think about it beyond just the single request and understand in the broader system why and how does this satisfy a legitimate government interest. So that's, that's the exercise. It has not been a yes, no, but it's been an exercise more than winners, losers. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Potamé, speak a little bit about some of the operational impacts as well?
Yes, if I can. I just wanted to go back to councilmember Bud, just to see if you had any follow-up questions or anything, since you're the one spoke to it with what our attorney said.
Directly on what we passed tonight and our ability to modify that between now and September 15th, I believe you've explained that we do have some wiggle room there. And that's not the legal term.
No, but it's, it's, it's the context. If, if, if picnic tables is what you want to talk about on the 15th, I think that that's something that's on the table that we could, we could adjust. But I would.
Right. And as, as it relates to the differentiation, you know, I believe that, that our neighborhood groups, as a ward council person that has seven neighborhood groups, only a couple of which are active, and I'm working very, I'm a strong proponent of neighborhood groups and how important it is for local community to, to be connected. And the city's program with neighborhood groups is, is one of the ways we live up to that strategic priority. So I believe it is different than a lot of, like, a faith-based group that came to us and wanted free picnic. That's fine, you know, that they want picnic tables and chairs, but we, that's not a program that the city is, is created and is behind and is supporting. So I think neighborhood groups are significantly different. I think boards and commissions are significantly different. If one of our boards or commissions wanted chairs and tables at some event, for us to, to not offer that when we do in fact have them is challenging for me. So, so I will support this with the idea that maybe we have some space to think more about that item on it between now and September 15th. But that's where I'm, that's, I saw your, I saw those kind of guidelines in, in our package. And I thought, yeah, I think that we could pretty clearly differentiate the, the programs where we ask our community to step in, lead these things. We don't pay them for it. It serves public purpose according to our strategic priorities. So I think that it meets those criteria, so.
Thank you, councilmember Bud. And I will now move to our city manager, Kim Keller.
Thank you. Thanks for, for entertaining. Just a couple of thoughts here. So just a little more background. From an operational standpoint, as we were attempting to apply the analysis that the city attorney gave to us, we ended with potentially a whole list of community organizations that have a similar impact on the community. And from an operational standpoint, we just would not have capacity to accommodate those requests. In the past, there was a resident rate and a non-resident rate, and that was restricted fairly recently, within the last couple of years, just because, again, of that capacity thing. So if council was interested in doing the work to create the rationale, to have the findings, that we, I, I would ask that, that it is as limited as possible from an operational standpoint. Because we, I'm hearing clearly from our park and rec staff that that just is a, is a real concern that they have. For instance, National Night Out would be something where maybe we would get lots of neighborhood organizations asking for them. We simply couldn't accommodate that. And much less other community groups.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, comments, councilmember?
Point of information on this fee schedule, we're not proposing any type of fee for providing picnic tables or chairs because we've just eliminated that service.
Correct.
Thank you.
I would say, though, that we are voting on removing it because it was there. Is
It was there for neighborhood groups is what it was there for, I think, maybe the last year. So when, when staff encountered these, running up against these barriers where we just don't have enough to do, we, the step was taken to really narrow it as much as possible. There were one or two neighborhood groups that were using it. So that's how it kind of lingered on the fee schedule. And then this year, after we've done a deeper analysis, we're proposing removing it.
Okay. With that, I don't think we have any more comments or questions. Okay, then we move on to a vote. Let me get sure, make sure I get the language on this correct. All those in favor of the first reading of the ordinance adopting fees for 2026?
Aye.
Anybody?
Aye. Sorry.
I was waiting for you to read the whole action.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, sorry.
Should I do it again?
Is there a second part?
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance adopting fees for 2026 and set second reading for September 15, 2025. All in favor say?
Was there a motion?
Oh, did we have a motion?
There was a motion in a second.
I thought there was.
Yeah.
Because I was waiting for convert, yeah, I was.
There's a lot of things happening.
I wanted that before I wanted comments. Nope, thank you, though, for checking. That's why you're here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like we made it. That passes. All right. Next on our agenda is the resolution authorizing Knollwood Chipotle Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Conditional Use Permits in Ward 3. Let me get to, oh, yeah, I'm inviting, I'm lost, Caitlin Shampoo, our associate planner, to come forward and present on this matter.
Okay, this is on, okay. Well, hello, everyone. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Caitlin Shampoo. I'm an associate planner in the community development. I'm an associate planner in the Community Development Department, and tonight I'll be presenting the Knollwood-Chipotle project for your review and consideration. I also want to point out that the property owner, Jay Lindsay, and representatives from the project team at Civil Site Group are in the audience and available to answer questions this evening. The proposed project involves two properties located in the southwest corner of the city adjacent to Knollwood Mall, 8528 Highway 7 and 8530 Highway 7. The owner of both properties, Lindsay Knollwood II LLC, proposes to develop a Chipotle restaurant on the southern parcel, which is outlined in red on the map. The restaurant will have a drive-through lane on the south side of the building for pickup orders only. The northern parcel, 8530 Highway 7, which is outlined in blue on the slide, is zoned C2 general commercial and guided for commercial in the comprehensive plan. The site has two existing principal buildings. The building on the west side of the site is a Firestone, which provides motor vehicle services. And the building on the east side of the site is a multi-tenant building with a mix of uses, including restaurant, retail, and service uses. It also has a drive-through lane on the south side of the building for the Jimmy Johns in that building. The southern parcel, 8528 Highway 7, which is outlined in green on the slide, is a vacant site zoned C2 general commercial and guided for right-of-way in the comprehensive plan. The property located at 8530 Highway 7 has an existing special permit that was originally approved in 1985 and later amended that same year and again the following year. The special permit resulted in the demolition of an existing car wash at the time to allow the construction of an automotive service center that still exists today, the Firestone. The proposed project does not alter the existing buildings on this site, but it does propose changes to the site plan on the south and east sides of the property or the parking lot. So given that impact, staff had recommended that the applicant just clean up the approvals on the site by rescinding the existing special permit and applying for a new conditional use permit. The property located at 8528 Highway 7 is a vacant site that was formerly used for a westbound on-ramp to Highway 7 from Aquila Avenue South. The Minnesota Department of Transportation had a highway easement over this area until 2022, when it released its easement over the property to Lindsay Knollwood II LLC, the applicant for the proposed project and the property owner of both properties. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting the following: approval of a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use of a portion of the property located at 8528 Highway 7 from right-of-way to commercial; the second, approval of a conditional use permit to allow in-vehicle service, off-site parking, and shared parking for 8528 Highway 7; and approval to rescind the special permit for 8530 Highway 7 and approve a conditional use permit allowing in-vehicle sales and service and more than one principal building on the site. The map on this slide shows the proposed future land use for the site, which is commercial. And staff don't anticipate significant impacts of this change on the surrounding properties given that the existing commercial uses, given the existing commercials uses surrounding the site. And then, as you can see on the map, nearly all of the properties adjacent to 8528 Highway 7 are guided commercial as well. The following slides provide an overview of the zoning analysis for this project, starting with our architectural design standards. So the proposed building will consist mostly of brick and glass, which zoning considers Class 1 materials. Each building facade has to have, is required to have a minimum of 60% Class 1 materials, no more than 10% of Class 3 materials. The proposed project meets that requirement. The proposed building also meets our requirements for ground floor transparency in the C2 district by providing visibility into the space along all street-facing facades. You can see that on the images provided on this slide. The applicant requested a conditional use permit for off-site and shared parking with the existing commercial lot for two main reasons. The first being that the Chipotle parking lot is an extension of the existing parking lot for the commercial property to the north, and the second being that the Chipotle lot cannot accommodate the minimum required parking for the proposed use on its own. Given the off-site and shared parking requests, staff assessed the parking requirements for both of the lots together. So the total required parking for the two properties is 84 parking spaces, and this includes a 10% reduction for being located within a quarter mile of bus transit service. It's located adjacent to Route 17. And the proposed project meets this requirement by providing 68 parking spaces on the existing commercial lot and 16 parking spaces on the Chipotle lot. The site plan also includes four bicycle parking spaces on the west side of the building and four parking spaces served by electric vehicle charging stations, including one ADA parking space, which, again, that meets our zoning code requirements. And then I also just want to point out that the proposed Chipotle development will not have access to Aquila Avenue South or Highway 7. Customers will access the site from 37th Street West via a proposed easement across the existing commercial site to the north. The Minnesota Department of Transportation restricted access to Highway 7 when it released its highway easement to the property owner. And the city will also prohibit direct access to both Aquila and Highway 7 as a condition of the approval. The zoning code requires in-vehicle sales and service in the C2 district to provide enough space in the drive-through line for at least six cars, starting at the customer service point. So this is either the order board for the Jimmy Johns or the pickup window for the Chipotle. So as shown on the slide, Chipotle provides space for a line of eight cars from the pickup window, which meets the code requirement. And the cars are shown in red, and the pickup window is marked by the small yellow star, if you can see that. The site plan also indicates there will be three pull-in parking spaces designated for customers who may have entered the pickup lane a little too early, their order's not ready, so they're able to park in those three spaces outlined in red, kind of on the eastern side of the property, so they don't hold up the line and continue to move through. The applicant also provided the six-car stacking requirement for the Jimmy Johns on the northern property. The development of this drive-through likely predated the stacking requirement, so that explains why that sixth car in line kind of starts to encroach into the drive aisle a little bit. But I want to note that there were some discussions about the potential circulation challenges of the site at Planning Commission, and the property owner, Jay Lindsay, was in attendance at that meeting and responded to those concerns. And staff also find that the circulation of the site to be acceptable. The applicant proposes to plant 15 new trees and 92 new shrubs on the site, which meets our zoning code requirements for the project. As shown on the site plan, the Chipotle lot can't accommodate all of the required trees on the site, so some of the remaining trees are being planted on the portion of the site to the north that is impacted by the project. I also want to point out that the applicant is not proposing to remove trees on the site to facilitate the development. Once again, staff recommend the following motions. And then, just to reiterate, recap, there was a planning commission meeting on August 20th. They reviewed the application and held a public hearing for it. There were no members of the public in attendance. Both staff did receive a comment from one member, one resident, prior to the planning commission meeting, kind of voicing their opposition to the conditional use permit application for a drive-through. They had cited the city's strategic priority of environmental stewardship and its goal to reduce vehicle emissions by 25%. And we had shared a copy of that comment with commissioners prior to the meeting. It should also be in your packet tonight. So after closing the public hearing, the planning commission recommended approval with a 6-1 vote. So if city council approves the application tonight, staff will submit the comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council for review and authorization following that action. And with that, I'll hand it back to Mayor Proton. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Very well done. In just a second, I'm going to ask my council colleagues for any clarifying questions. Before I do that, though, I also want to note that after those clarifying questions, we will be opening up the space for public comment. So if somebody would like to speak on that, if you want to fill out the famed blue card and hand it to a staff person, that will help move things along a little more quickly. But you can also come forward at the time when I open that up to speak, if you wish to do so. So with that, I will look to my council colleagues for any clarifying questions for It's a sign of a very good report. No clarifying questions. Well done. Okay, so then that leads us to the comment period, correct? Thank you. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, the microphone is open at this point, probably no need to fill out a blue card, just come forward, state your name and address. And if you do, I will go through the details of public comment. All right. Looks like we don't have any interested parties, so I guess it's correct, then, that there's no need to open it? Okay. I will now look to my council colleagues for comment and/or any motions.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that we table voting on this tonight. We have a light council of five members, and that means two of our members aren't here to weigh in. And I think this is an important enough consideration that we would be wise to table it. So I would make a motion that we table these action, table these action items to October 6th, the October 26th, or the October 6th, 2025 council meeting.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any discussion on this matter? On this motion, not the broader motion? We're going to be just talking about the tabling motion at this point.
Yep. Yes, I'd just like to comment real briefly. One of the reasons we're considering tabling it is I shared one of my concerns about this project with Councilmember Bud. And I don't want to be the single vote that keeps it from passing because we don't have a full panel up here. But that being said, I generally am opposed to allowing drive-throughs in our community. I've voiced that opinion here before and ask that we study this in the future. It is allowed by our codes, but in this case, we have to approve a comprehensive plan amendment. We've got considerable discretion for that. To me, it seems like we're trying to squeeze every last bit of development we can into the space that's available over at Knollwood. And I understand why that makes sense for the owner of Knollwood Mall. This type of facility, to me, feels like it's contrary to the anti-idling effort we're making throughout the city, where we're trying to encourage drivers at our junior, at our middle school and other facilities to not sit there and idle their vehicles and throw fluorocarbons up into the environment. And drive-throughs do the exact opposite of that. And I realize they're convenient, and a lot of people like them. And I just feel like, for the sake of some nominal convenience, instead of parking and going inside places that will continue to pollute the environment with our vehicles in order to enjoy that nominal convenience. So I'm generally not supportive of these. It seems like this one's really tightly fit into a small site. There was at least one commissioner at the planning commission that voiced some safety concerns around the sidewalks and the cars queuing up there. And I share those concerns with her. So that's one of the reasons why, if we had the motion in front of us, I would not be supportive. So I'm happy to support this motion to table it so we can have it considered by the full panel later.
Any other thoughts or comments on this motion?
Can I seek a clarification? There's multiple requests by the staff. Is this a motion to table all aspects of this application to the October 6th meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more comments, thoughts on this motion to table this item to October 6th? I would ask for a vote. All in favor of tabling item, what an item number is it? 7A on the Knollwood-Chipotle Comprehensive Plan and Amendment and Conditional Use Permits to October 6th? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to tabling? Seeing none, we will table this item. And therefore, we move on, correct? All right. Now I gotta, you know, skip ahead. Oh, is that it? All right, this takes us to our, yep, communications and announcements. And Kim, I know you have a couple, so I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. I do have a couple. So for those who don't plan ahead, this week on Friday, we have Movies in the Parks at Aquila, starting at 7:30, showing Moana 2. We also have the art fair on Saturday over at The Rock, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. This is the seventh year of an annual art fair. We do it in partnership with Friends of the Arts. It's an amazing event. For those who do plan ahead a little more, we've got a cleanup day scheduled on the 13th. There's a paper shredding event on the 19th, which my eight-year-old would love to just be at all day long. And also, on the 18th, is Climate Action Academy, which is a really fun event to come and learn how to reduce your energy use, save money on energy upgrades, avoid common solar scams, and more. So that's over at Lenox.
Anybody else have any communications?
I do. I just would like to say thank you to the St. Louis Park Police Department for the basketball in the park, which ended last Thursday. It was amazing time had, an amazing event that is done every year. You guys do an amazing job. The last party was like the best party ever, like, in a long time. I was out there dancing by myself, but it's okay. It was just amazing. Kids were getting their hair cut, they had school supplies, people that struggled with the police came out there, you know, and they was busy, but then they was having a good time. And one lady was like, oh, I missed this all summer because I was mad at the police. I'm like, yeah. And she was mad at Minneapolis police, not even our police. But, you know, just thank you guys for doing that every year, bringing the community together. That is just amazing. And I just want to thank you guys.
All right. And I'll just throw out, our St. Louis Park Public School students went back to school today. I believe Benild may have started last week or maybe even earlier than that. And so that is your annual reminder to be careful out there on the roads in the morning and the afternoon for our school bus drivers. Remember those rules to stop and all of that. And I will also just throw out, if you're a parent of children in any school, our teachers were going back with an extra dose of anxiety this year in our community. So be patient and loving toward them. So with that, I think, what's that? With that, we don't have anything else. This meeting is adjourned.